Let's come out of into the next and final meeting.
Hello.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And the next and final meeting of this evening, this is the regular city council WPCA meeting, and it is now nine oh five PM, and I appreciated the request for a break so we can all get some coffee and make our way through this last agenda.
And munchkins?
And munchkins, and there's twenty-four items on the agenda, so let's jump right in. Item number one, this is a roll call vote that I will be looking for with regard to the sewer user fees. So for discussion purposes, I will entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen here enacting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the WPCA administrator and Public Works Director to set the sewer use fee for the year beginning July one, 2025, ending June thirtieth, 2026, as follows: For residential users, four hundred and twenty-six dollars per dwelling unit, and for all other users, four hundred and twenty-six dollars per sixty-five thousand gallons of volume of flow.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Oliver. And I know that the question may be, what does this four hundred and twenty-six dollar recommendation mean? This is a six-dollar increase over the FY twenty-five budget, six dollars for the year. So floor is open to questions.
Just wanted to ask for a quick overview of what drives the costs, and just maybe more of a summary of what's involved in determining that cost.
Okay, so I marked off some of the, some of the big increases were employee benefits. We got a ten percent increase in our sludge disposal by Synagro. The last year of that contract, but as I was, we went out to bid five years ago for that contract, and there was only two bidders, and the person that won, Viola, won the bid, and they decided they're not going to do that anymore. So there's really only, they're the only player, so, and there's a lot of problems in this state with incinerators, same problems Ray was alluding to about municipal waste, we're having the same problems with sludge disposal. The incinerators are old, they're breaking down, and that's a story. Synagro told me when they told me about the increase. I don't think that makes anybody feel better, but that's where we're at, and there's not really a solution, except for looking for a new technology.
Really? Are they looking into their bed?
Which we, which we are looking into, and we, we may bring, we may bring more of that to the board.
There, there are new technologies.
Yeah.
Out there, and we are.
Looking into it, yeah.
Yeah.
You know what infuriates me about this, and so many related sort of issues with trash and all this business? These are, every township in the state of Connecticut is facing these identical issues, you know, these identical, if there is anything that defines a statewide problem, requiring statewide solutions, statewide, you know, experience and expertise, it should be these areas, you know? And I have no idea where the hell our elected state officials, what they are doing, or why they haven't taken control of this, knowing for years, for years, all related departments have been warning city councils across the state that this is going to become more and more and more of a major issue, and there's been nothing of substance that I can see sitting in this seat, who come from Hartford, about this, and that, clearly that upsets me.
Feel better?
Good reason.
Thanks, Paul.
No, but. You could talk to the social worker.
She's probably over, no, we only have one.
You're right, that's, that's been a problem that's been looming for a long time, Ray knows it, we've.
And there should be, there should be regional.
Questions, deep officials.
And, yeah.
Not legislators, though.
Ed, the incinerator you spoke of, would that decrease our volumes and what we dispose of?
The incinerator is what burn, takes our sludge currently. The new technologies I'm talking about would, yes, it would, it would decrease our costs considerably.
Okay.
We're looking into it.
And would.
As I find out more about that, I'll bring that here.
Okay. Is the new technologies be housed here in town, or other solutions?
No, we're looking into that for Torrington.
Okay, great, thank you.
I know, it's uncomfortable being as cryptic as we are, because it is such cutting-edge technology that we really feel it's important that we do enough of a deep dive in the investigation, but it definitely will come to this board for a lot of importance.
Right.
Electricity is a major increase. So, are, some of our, you'll see there's a bigger expense on service agreements and repairs, repairs and preventative maintenance. Some of that is, gotta be, we had to hire vendors for a lot of our new equipment if we want to take care of it properly. So that's, that's the driving point of that. And also in the repayment fund, Wrightwood Avenue was added to that, repay fund.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Other questions before we call this motion? All right, it's a roll call vote, and again, the recommendation is to increase for residential users the fees to four hundred and twenty dwelling unit, and four hundred and twenty-six dollars per sixty-five thousand gallons of volume flow. This is a six-dollar increase over last year's fees. So I'm starting to my right, Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver?
Yes.
All right, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
So the Northwest Resource Recovery Ordinance, is it, because there are some portions of that ordinance that we probably need to tweak, do we want to table this?
Well, I mean, you could take two actions. We could pass the ordinance as written, and then amend the ordinance through the ordinance committee, we'd have to go through the public hearing process again. Being that there is still a potential, albeit small, that we could acquire the facility, we'd have to do the reverse. If we didn't pass it, we'd have to go through it again to add the language about the facility in it.
Got it, okay.
So.
Your recommendation is to pass it and?
So I, my recommendation is to pass it as it has been presented by Corporation Council, and then, over the next six to eight weeks, depending on, you know, what transpires, if we have to change it, you know, obviously, we have that mechanism in place to do that.
Okay. Everybody agree? We're good?
Yes. Yeah, are we, are we taking questions now?
Please, yes.
Is this, is this related to the presentation you made to us about the transfer?
Yes, it's the transfer station on Vista Drive.
Yeah, and what happened there, Ray? Can you give us more detail why we?
So, there are eleven towns in the region that have municipal service agreements with MIRA. So part of, you know, our package to MIRA was a transfer of reserve funds from MIRA for tip stabilization, contingency, a contingency fund to be placed in with OPM.
Right.
So that was our proposal to, and then they would give us the facility, a facility that the taxpayers of this state and this city paid for.
Right.
What transpired, we were working on it, we had a term sheet, we had an executed term sheet. Several weeks later, USA Hauling and Recycling submitted a proposal to MIRA for, to absorb the contracts other than the MSAs, and pay MIRA, and no tip stabilization, and they offered to buy the facility from MIRA for three point two five million. A facility that's on the assessors' records at five hundred thousand dollars.
Wow, six times above the price. And the concern was that if they did this, there would be a complete monopoly on this service.
It would be a virtual monopoly.
For generations.
Correct.
That's correct.
And that is why we embarked on.
Yeah, I remember that, I remember all your arguments in favor of pursuing this.
Because, you know, looking at it from that perspective, we received, we and all the towns in the region that have the agreements, received proposals from USA. We're not prepared to discuss that proposal here, it takes a, we want to discuss it with you at a later time. But that's really kind of how it went, transpired. You know, we were going along, we had a term sheet, the commissioner of deep signed off on the term sheet, the director of the COG signed off on it, the mayor, Carbone, signed off on it, and then said, three or four weeks later, after we had an executed term sheet, albeit a non-binding term sheet, USA came in and offered this, and this past Wednesday, on the fourteenth, the MDA board, who by state legislatures, was really given carte blanche to do whatever they wanted with their assets.
Including no bid process.
Including, I mean, it was a no bid, no advertisement.
Is, does the state mandate that we have to go through the MBA? Could, could the eleven course, the eleven related towns create their own?
Yes.
That's what we were trying to do.
Well, and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do.
We cannot just build one, build a different one that is our own?
I mean, theoretically, you could.
Non-specific, non-technical.
I mean, you could, you could, you, the eleven towns, I mean, they're, you know, they would be expensive to build, you know, you're talking, you know, a multi-million dollar investment.
Yeah, but.
Where would you cite that?
It's not that expense, right? I mean, there's what, there's dropping, I mean, there's huge bins, and then there's weighing, and.
And then there's.
There's not a whole lot more.
Yeah, disposal, right. Setting up.
No, but this is, you know, we're not making computers here, right?
Not rocket science?
We're not, no, but considering what this will mean in ten, fifteen, twenty years, the fees that they can then charge us, all we have to think of is EverSource, and, you know, what, what they are doing in a monopolistic environment, and this is going to happen, and if you think trash removal costs for a city like Torrington are high now, they'll be astronomical, and, and so that small startup, I mean, is this something we can?
So, this.
Next time, you want me to start it?
So that, yeah, the, the meeting that Ray is talking about last Wednesday, Ray and I participated, and we did express our concern that there was no public process, no, no bid, no RFQ, you know, here we were working towards, through this, this term sheet that we executed in February.
Yeah, it was late February.
Yes, and, you know, and then all of a sudden, USA, you know, shows up and says, we're willing to pay you, you know, ten times, or.
Or eight times.
Yeah, what it's, what it's valued at. We did immediately reach out to our delegation after that meeting, I did express my concern that, you know, is the state paying attention to, you know, the monopoly, the, you know, that they have the corner of the market now? They already had the corner of the market even before acquiring this piece of property, right?
I remember that.
So I know that the initial response was, they looked at the legislation that was passed last year, giving MDA all this authority to do whatever they needed to do to get rid of the assets of the, of MIRA, but there was, I did request that it be brought to the Attorney General, just to make sure.
Yep.
That there is an antitrust issues that we should be paying attention to.
Did you get a response from him?
Uh, not from the AG yet, no. Our delegation were going, was intending to go and speak with him, and I haven't heard from them yet.
When was this, Mayor?
Uh, this was on Wednesday.
One day fourteen.
Oh, okay, all right.
Last Wednesday.
Two tangs office, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, on Wednesday?
Wednesday the fourteenth.
Was it fourteenth?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
So.
Follow-up in a different direction.
Sure.
Separately.
Yes.
Counselor Kevin Arrow, to your point, is, that, that's kind of where this ordinance starts, is gets us started in the creation of that authority.
Understood, no, we'll definitely support, it would be, of course, we'll support this. That's it for me, Mayor.
Yes, no, I appreciate the comments, I think it was important to have those, those questions out there, and to Councilman Iveyne's questions regarding a little bit earlier about the cost.
You know, what are the fears about those tipping fees? That is the fear.
Yeah.
No local control, so.
All right, listen, we had a long agenda, man, we can.
Okay, so, so then I am going to do this roll call vote, so for the purposes of getting this on the table, I will entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the Code of Ordinance, Chapter sixty-three, Northwest Resource Recovery Authority.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne?
Second.
And second, excuse me, by Councilwoman Spino. All right, this is a roll call vote, if there are no other questions or comments, starting from my right, Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilman Iveyne?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, good, this one passes, thank you. So we tabled the public hearing on number two, but I do need to add to this agenda in place of this motion, and I need two-thirds of a vote to agree to add this to the agenda, an item to schedule or reschedule the public hearing. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion that we would be looking for is a motion to schedule or reschedule the public hearing for the sale of Torrington West Street to, is it June third, second?
Sixteenth.
June sixteenth? June sixteenth. So the motion is to reschedule the public hearing on the sale of four oh three Torrington West Street to June sixteenth. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Any other questions or comments? Calling the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so item three, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we outlived the public on this evening's meetings. Moving into item four. Am I missing anybody from the public? Nope. Moving into item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes for May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron, all, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To, for B, entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes from May eleventh. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on Monday, June second, at six thirty, to solicit citizen input regarding the proposal for participation in the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron and Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions, comments? Hearing none.
Okay, can we have an explanation of the Neighborhood Assistance Program?
So this is an annual program, the city solicits, grant, excuse me, applications for participation in the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. This is a program where they can use tax credits, you don't recall? We do this every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it allows them to access tax credits for programs that they're running, usually through EverSource, I'm trying to think of some of the, the companies that buy those credits.
Okay, I get it, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, that was a really bad explanation, but if you go back and look at the minutes from last year at this time, you'll be able to do it. And more importantly, you'll see the kinds of organizations that apply for it, Kids Play, the Historical Society, there are a number of those not-for-profits that do apply for those.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for tree trimming and removal services for FY twenty-five, twenty-six at the same price and terms with a Splend Tree Expert Company of Willow Grove, Pennsylvania, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments?
Point of order?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Did we skip approval of minutes?
No, we did those.
Oh, I missed that, sorry, I don't know where it was.
Yeah, should you have abstained?
There's still, there's still munchkins available.
What's that?
There's still munchkins available.
Oh, I might need them. The brain drain right now is ridiculous.
I think it's this side of the, this side.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor.
No, that's fine.
I apologize, everybody.
I know, I, I am trying to go through the rudimentary ones kind of quickly, but, all right, so we are on the extension of the tree trimming and removal services. So again, this is at the same price and terms as the current contract. Do I, a motion has been made and seconded already, I apologize, I'm going to call that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for maintenance and repair of HVAC equipment for FY twenty-five, twenty-six at the same price and terms as the current contract. This is with Airtemp Mechanical Services of Berlin, Connecticut, as further explained in the purchasing agents, thank you, was that?
Second.
Also, was that Councilman Iveyne?
No, Waldron.
I was, Waldron's usually the one that cuts me off before I finish the motion.
Efficiency.
Yeah. So, so, motion made by Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
I was just, I was reading through this, and I was just kind of surprised, the apprentices are getting seventy-seven, apprentices are getting seventy-seven dollars an hour for this, six hundred dollars a day for apprentices? That's the going rate for apprentices?
That's the going rate from Airtemp?
For what?
That's the going rate that Airtemp posted, so we went out to bid, their ninety-two dollars was lower than anybody else's for the main person, and then an apprentice, we hardly ever get an apprentice, we always just get an actual tech that comes out.
We don't get an apprentice? I didn't hear what you just said.
Very rarely do actually get an apprentice, a lot of times, one tech shows up, no apprentice, and they do a service on something and leave.
Oh, all right, well, okay, that just struck me, is that's almost three thousand a week for an apprentice than I remember years ago, I just cannot imagine, you know, for, I mean, apprentice is the guy who, you know, carries stuff.
I, I think, though, that might be what the company charges, but that's not necessarily what the apprentices make.
This is what they're charging for that, okay.
Yeah, I think some of the other bids were in the sixties, somewhere in the eighties for an apprentice, they were all over the place.
This for the, does this include the school now, the new school?
No, this is city side only, they have their own vendor for the Board of Ed.
Um, as an expert in this field, I, because I'm just concerned, you know, look, this goes back maybe a couple months ago, and I was looking at the new high school, and certainly nowhere near an expert on this, but I noticed there's a huge, there's a tremendous increase in the amount of HVAC stuff on, on the new school versus what the old school had, I was watching them tear down the old school, I was realizing, and this is, I mean, that's, that is accounted in, in their capital budget then? There's got to be a huge increase in what it's going to take to maintain, because they decided the Board of Ed to build along the highway, I assume that's why you have this huge increase in HVAC units on the top of those buildings, right? Is that?
It's, it's also code requirements, the code completely all changed in twenty twenty five, yeah.
And that's why?
Okay. So units that you were able to get in twenty twenty-four for eight thousand dollars are now going to be twelve thousand dollars for the same exact unit based on new code, because they changed all the refrigerant.
But it's the number of units, so therefore, well, I saw this, and I realized that school, that new school, this, this may be a huge increase in what it's going to cost the city, whether it comes out of their budget.
The operational expenses are going to be ginormous, yes.
Okay.
It's all based on code and air changes and everything else, and what you need to size for buildings now, it's.
Okay, fair enough, that's all, Mayor, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no additional questions on the HVAC equipment, I'm going to call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for miscellaneous electrical service and repairs, this again is for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, again, same terms and prices. This is a contract with First Line Services of Cromwell, as further explained on.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current contract for general plumbing and related repairs, FY twenty-five, twenty-six, again, same terms and prices for, for the current contract, and this is with West State Mechanical of Torrington.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for miscellaneous locksmith and door repair services for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, same price, same term as current contract, with DRF Locksmith Specialist LLC in Perrin Apple Hill Enterprises LLC of Thomaston.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eleven, I will entertain a motion to. Is that a duplicate? Thank you. I, I, so, purchasing agent says, item eleven is a duplicate of item ten, so we're going to skip item eleven, go into item twelve. I will entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for on-call roof repairs and annual inspection services, FY twenty-five, twenty-six, same price, same terms as the current contract to Eagle Rivet Roof Services Corp.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council, here enacting as Water Pollution Control Authority to approve the following payments coming from Fund four ninety sanitary sewer capital improvement.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino, and just for the record, it is thirty thousand, six hundred, two dollars and three cents for the Winston Road Force Main Tunnel Project, and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and two cents for the Harris Dry Pump Station. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen here enacting as Water Pollution Control to approve the WPCA budget, beginning, for the year beginning July one, twenty-five to June thirty, twenty-six.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen here enacting as Water Pollution Control Authority to approve the WPCA five-year capital improvement budget program for the year beginning seven, one, twenty-five, ending six, thirty, twenty, thirty. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, again, entertaining a motion by the Board of Councilmen here enacting as Water Pollution Control Authority to approve the WPCA miscellaneous fee schedule for the year beginning seven, one, twenty-five, ending six, thirty, twenty-six.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seventeen, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, this is pending Board of Finance approval, thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Second by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments on the motion or the memo? None? We'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Erica. Item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the upgrade of the FileMaker database server and Citrix application delivery system that supports Sentry RMS solution for the Torrington Police Department to AccuCom Consulting, Inc. of Westport, Connecticut, in the sum of fourteen thousand four hundred. And this will be paid from the IT Contract Services account.
No move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorized tax refunds.
No move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty, I'll entertain a motion to accept recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated in the list dated May nineteenth. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Penny, anything from purchasing this evening? Thank you.
Microphones aren't working.
Mr. Drew, anything from Public Works? Thank you. Jamie, anything from facilities? Thank you. And Ed, anything from the WPCA? You're good. City Clerk's office. I, I know. Wake up. I just want to, just thank you for troubleshooting our technical difficulties today. Every time I saw it freeze, I was like, I hope they can hear us. Corporation Council, anything this evening?
You can't be serious.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moving into twenty-two. I will entertain a motion.
The bargain to have them.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Erica. Who stayed. It's nine thirty, I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's way past my bedtime. No, I just want to give a quick thank you to everybody, the department heads, the budget subcommittee, public comment, everybody who had input on these budgets, they are definitely not easy to to put together, that's for sure.
You have to give yourself a big pat on the back as well. Erica's done such an amazing job keeping all of us on task. I just, you know, whisper what I think we need to do and she delivers, so, right back to you, Erica. We're not done, we still have a few more weeks. Yeah?
Well done.
Okay, so moving to item twenty-two, I'm sorry, what? Who's, oh, I see Deputy Chief Trip is still on the call. Anything from the Fire Department this evening?
No, ma'am, I'd just like to thank everybody for a long evening and, you can hear me ramble on earlier.
Really? And Jerry Crowley, anything from IT this evening?
No, ma'am.
No, thank you. All right, now I'm going to move into twenty-two, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and members.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll go to my left. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
Not at all.
Okay, Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Nothing, ma'am, thank you.
Councilwoman Spino?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Councilman Iveyne?
I thought I'd go through a laundry list of items and excruciating details.
I will come over there right now.
We're on again tomorrow.
Don't make me come over there.
Okay, we'll, we'll save it for tomorrow.
Absolutely.
We do have a request.
Close that box.
Give me my second wind here.
And I'm telling you, Heather's already saying, no more coffee for council members in a meeting.
Right, sedatives, highly recommended.
Sausage and peppers.
Councilman Waldron, anything? Yes.
Sausage and peppers. I heard the new high school has some serious leaks in its roof after the big rains last week.
Yes.
Are you kidding?
Possibly damage to gym floor.
No.
Middle school, yeah, so.
Have you heard, Mayor?
Yes, well, I'm, I'm hearing from the same sources that Councilman Waldron is hearing, not directly from the Board of Ed or from the superintendent. Yes, roof leaks through the rain. And they were dismissed early today because there were plumbing issues, like no water in the restrooms.
Have you heard this one, Mayor? This comes secondary to me, not primary, but secondary, but I've heard it before, that they're limiting, we all went to high school, multiple clubs, that they're limiting, that kids can only join one club now because something about the hallways are too congested. Have you heard this one?
Both my kids are in the high school, I haven't heard that one yet.
And they're doing multiple clubs?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then it's wrong, okay.
Yeah, my daughters.
Then it was, I guess.
I'll check when I get home if they're.
Because I found that really disturbing that they were told they couldn't take more than one club because the hallways were too crowded. Okay.
Well.
I'm glad that's not.
A leaky roof is more of a problem, though, right?
Yeah, well, especially if it's damaged and new floor.
But considering we just built it.
No, 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 I, I, you know, listen, clubs are, kids, after-school clubs is just a great thing for schools in a lot of ways.
It's not after school.
It's during school.
During the. They have like an activity period one day a week.
Oh, that's what it is.
And there's only, you know, so much time, so they're saying, and they don't want kids going to multiple meetings and running the hallways and it's just, I'm pretty sure that's it.
That's it, okay, all right.
But we can definitely get an answer for you from.
It's not.
Yes. But, but to your point, but to your point, you know, when we talk about chronic absenteeism or you talk about graduation rate, those are the hooks that keep the kids coming in.
Yes, that engage the kids and get them in.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Absolutely.
Exactly what I'm thinking.
Anyway.
Not a major thing, but it's up there.
Yeah.
I agree. So, Councilman Waldron, did you have anything to add this evening, other than that?
What's that?
Did you have anything to add this evening?
No, that was it.
Okay, good, all right. Moving into item twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting back to the public for comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Iveyne, all in favor? Public, they're all department heads out there. Moving into item twenty-four, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. Thank you. That is.
You know, this would have been a regular Board of Education.